Yeah, can hear you.
Very good. Let's go for the apology.
Good afternoon and welcome to the board meeting of the community planning Aberdeen. This is a hybrid meeting and we have some people joining us remotely via Microsoft Teams. Members of the board joining us remotely should keep their camera on at all times but switch their microphone off until they wish to speak. All other remote participants should have their microphones and cameras switched off during the meeting unless they are speaking. All remote participants will be asked to speak at the appropriate time and we are going on to the roll call chair. Chair?
Present.
Shantini Paragioti?
Present.
Councillor Blake? Councillor Blake?
Present.
Councillor Radley?
Present.
Councillor Cook?
Yep, present.
Angela Scott?
Present.
Anthony Standen? Sarah Chu?
Present.
Professor Edward?
Present.
Nick Five?
Present.
Matthew Lockley? Adam Coateswell? Chair, we have our apologies from Andy Wright and I've got Michael Romge here on Teams. And we've got apologies from Richard McCollum, we've got apologies from Kate Stephen and apologies from Vice Chair, we've got Shantini substituting for her. And then we've got apologies from Susan Estin as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the minutes and the forward business. And 1.1, draft minute of the Committee Planning Aberdeen Board Meeting of the 27th of November is for approval, all action completed, as far as, nope. Have we got time to have a look at it? Are we happy to approve? Okay, we'll go on 1.2. The draft minute of the Committee Planning Aberdeen Management Group Meeting of the 26th of February 2025. And that's for information. Happy with that? 1.3, we've got the Forward Business Planner. Again, for information, any question, any comment on the planner? In person, online? No? So we go forward. 2.1, draft final report and review of community planning Aberdeen's approach to improving outcomes. I'll pass to Michelle Kombi.
Thanks, Councillor Allard. I've got a short presentation which Gogo was just pulling up. Presentation is for members of the board by way of introduction to this item. I'm going to give a very high level overview of the recommendations in the report and then I'm going to hand over to Shantini who will help us focus specifically on the recommendation in relation to the role of the Community Plan in Aberdeen Board. Before I get into the recommendations, I wanted to take just a few moments to reflect on the journey we have been on in the last 10 years since the Community Empowerment Act Scotland first came into force in 2015. As that act provides the legal basis for the way we do community planning in Aberdeen today. And whilst the report in front of you is comprehensive, it quite rightly focuses on the areas we want to improve and the changes we want to make going into the next 10 years. It doesn't detail all the developments and improvements we've already made over the last 10 years to get to where we are now, which I think is a strong position to meet the challenges we face to improve outcomes. This was highlighted by the Scottish Parliament, you'll recall, in their inquiry to community planning in 2023, when we were the only community planning partnership to be highlighted specifically within the recommendations of the committee, which I think is significant and testament to the strong foundations we have within Aberdeen. But of course, there's always room for improvement and the final report sets out 24 recommendations for that today. So Gogo, are you able to? Yeah, that's great. So if you just go on to the next slide, I've just got a couple of slides here. Just again, to sum up very briefly what's in the report. Our starting point for the review was to evaluate what outcomes we have achieved over the course of the local outcome improvement plan that we published in 2016. The report goes into further detail, but what I'm showing here are the top level measures of our strategic themes of economy, people and place. And as you will see at a glance, we are doing well in terms of our economic performance and environmental impact, but we're not yet achieving our overall targets in terms of child poverty and healthy life expectancy. In terms of our evaluation of outcomes, a key finding of the review is that we know we have good awareness of our performance in terms of outcomes. We know from our data where we're doing well and where we're not yet seeing the levels of improvement we're aiming for. But there is an opportunity to work with Public Health Scotland and indeed other national partners we're working with at the moment to enhance our approach to evaluation. At the moment, we can draw conclusions when we see our data going up and down, but modeling is an enhanced approach that could help us understand where outcomes might have been worse if it was not for the changes we're making within the city. And also to challenge ourselves on what realistically we can achieve locally with the levers we have, which is very important in the development of our next 10-year LOIP. So we've got, thanks, Gogo, if you just go on to the next slide. Oh, sorry, I forgot, I had some animation there. Thank you. Thank you. We've got several recommendations within the report that will further strengthen our approach to improving outcomes through our outcomes management and improvement framework, as you can see on the screen. So if you just click for me, Gogo? Yep, thank you. So under strategic planning, our recommendations relate to our desire to be more strategic, to make a strategic shift. We currently seek to deliver the outcomes in the LOIP through our extensive improvement programme. But we recognize that there is a danger that we have become a bit too fragmented in our approach and that we're not being as effective and efficient as we could be in terms of tackling related issues together due to the size of our improvement programme. The improvement projects that we have taken forward over the last few years have allowed us to test and learn in a safe, controlled environment and we can evidence the impact that the projects have had. But the improvement achieved has in some areas been small scale and it's not always been sustained when the project comes to an end. So therefore, there is a need for us to identify more strategic level aims and test system level changes, which have the potential for greater transformation and sustainable impact. So we're proposing that these system level changes that are going to be tested will be included in the LOIP itself, rather than identified later in the underpinning project charter. So that's a key recommendation that we're making. In terms of delivery, Gogo, if you just click again, thanks. Our recommendation is that there is no deviation from using quality improvement as our method for improving outcomes. But our capacity building framework will be adapted to support a more strategic and person-centred approach, which will include continuing to make better use of data, also research, best practice from elsewhere, co-production with communities and people with lived experience and importantly, continuing to draw on our own learning to effectively design, test and implement change. Next one, next two please, if you do two clicks for me. Thank you. Thanks, Gogo. And then against review and analyse, we've made recommendations that will streamline our current performance reporting to enable us to take again a more strategic level view of how well we're doing. And as discussed already, working with national and local partners to improve our approach to evaluation and strategic needs assessment. Just a final slide from me. If you just go on to the next slide, thanks, Gogo. Great. Just the last section in terms of recommendations is around our governance and accountability, which are about ensuring we're effectively organised to deliver the improvement we're seeking to achieve. We're not preempting the structure within the paper. We will need to review our structure again for the next 10-year plan to ensure we have got that oversight of the outcomes. But we do highlight that there is a need to make explicit the links with the multi-agency public protection structures we have in place through the Chief Officers Group and Community Safety Partnership. So posing that into the report. And that's really a quick run of the, through of the recommendations. We want to focus on the recommendation in the report around the intelligent board principles that we're making a recommendation that could support the board members in their scrutiny and challenge role. So Shantina is going to provide an overview of the principles and how NHS Graham has been using them in their own governance arrangements and to be a better partner to community planning Aberdeen.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Gogo, if we can have the next slide, please. So what I want to do over the next few minutes is really share our experience of using the intelligent board principles in NHS Graham. And really, I'll be reflecting on our experience in reviewing our governance arrangements internally within the Public Health Directorate, but actually then how we link in with our chief executive team, Population Health Committee and NHS Graham Board, and also, you know, how we engage in other groups across the system, so including community planning partnerships like this one. So the intelligent board principles really draw on work by the Dr Foster Group, which they did over a decade ago with NHS boards. And it was really to support NHS boards to use information in an intelligent way to be able to fulfil their roles and therefore then apply this to the challenge of tackling inequalities. Next slide, Gogo. So in the review report, so that's page 60 of the pack or page 26 of the review report itself, the actual principles from the, from the Dr Foster Group on intelligence boards are in there. And actually, the aim of the principles are really to make the distinction between the type of information you need for strategic discussions versus discussions around performance. And the key test around the intelligence is, so the key test about the information we're providing is whether or not it supports the conversations that we have in the relevant meetings, whether or not it supports the meeting participants to engage in constructive criticism. You know, the extent to which the information that we provide informs decision-making, provides early effective, effective early warnings and also helps us to understand the context in which we're operating. Next slide. So I'm going to start with some reflections that Susan and I had and, you know, I'm sure many of you have been part of book clubs and, you know, sometimes, you know, you, your book clubs next week and you're thinking, how am I going to get through this 400-page typebook? And be able to participate in a sensible discussion. But actually, sometimes what we found ourselves, you know, when we have two or three of these types of meetings in a week, then it can feel quite overwhelming, particularly when, you know, each set of papers goes into hundreds of pages. And so we started to reflect on how we might need to do things differently. Firstly, to ensure that we're working effectively to fulfil our own roles in the meetings that we take part in. But also, how do we support our non-executive members and others to make the most of that opportunity to then focus on strategic conversations so that, you know, we're effectively working across the whole system? Next slide, Gogo. So when we look at our business, you know, you can separate that out into the regulatory functions, the operational and strategy. And so we started to use this to really map out what it is that we want to do in each of our different types of meetings. So the regulatory and operational stuff we do internally within our own directorate and that really is about monitoring the progress against our delivery plan, for example. But the thing is, what are the, it's the so what of those meetings really that we want to move on then to our Population Health Portfolio Board, which is a meeting that we have across the system within the NHS, where we want to make those connections across the system. And then from that, what are the so what things that we need to escalate up to our Population Health Committee or our community planning partnerships because they impact on how we work across the system? So, and I guess in all of that, it's recognizing that, you know, our non-executive directors and so on have got roles in different parts of the system. And it's, you know, trying to make sure that we give them the right types of information to support them in their roles as well. Next slide, Gogo. So the ethos and approach is very much, much based on the intelligent board principles. And really, the way we set this out was to look at how we manage information challenge whilst making the most of the systematic cycle of reporting strategic and operational businesses based on, you know, the things that we need to cover. So the three things that I talked about in the slide before. And within that, it's also, you know, being clear about which group is doing what and, you know, what types of outputs we are wanting to escalate back and forth. Next slide, Gogo. So in thinking about how we put this all into practice, you know, there was something about recognizing what our partners around the table or our non-executive directors, where they work into the rest of the system and therefore what are the types of things that they would need. And also separating out what we're doing now versus what we need in the future and therefore what do we need to do to get to that point in the future? And then there's something about what that information is and also how we supported our board members. Next slide, okay. So, and then next slide again. So if we look at the, what information we were giving, we tried to use this tiered intelligence model, so separating, separating out the operational from the things that are relevant across systems and then strategy and governance. So this kind of relates to the slide that I was using earlier. So talking about the things that we do internally at the operational level and then the things that we take to talk to our, across the system in different portfolio areas. And then the things then that we bring into community planning partnerships, IJBS, or even our Population Health Committee and the board. Next slide. So to give you some tangible examples of how this has worked for us. So the first example is from the work that we were doing around the cost of living crisis. So at an operational level, we were engaging with partners and learning about some of the barriers, what was working well, but also some of the challenges that were, people were facing. Out of that, one of the key messages was the lack of premises and, you know, how we needed to look at, look differently at how we use premises across the communities. So in our cross-system conversations, Susan was having conversations with the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service and it transpired then that they had premises that actually we could use as partners. So that led then to some of our vaccination programmes being provided out of Scottish Fire and Rescue's premises, which served the purpose of actually being able to provide services closer within communities and therefore mitigate some of the access issues that we were having. And taking that experience then back into our own board, we were able to influence some of the approaches to planning, so infrastructure planning, and now our Director of Infrastructure is looking at how we do more strategic planning with partners going forward. The second example is around employability, which is, you know, a key strategic objective for community planning. But within the NHS, we've got the same financial constraints and pressures at the moment. And so we've got things like vacancy control, et cetera. But in navigating that, recognizing our commitment across the system to the priorities around employability, we've been able to draw on and, you know, our commitment as an anchor organisation and get commitment then to continuing with apprenticeships as part of, you know, that plan and therefore shoring up our commitment, you know, to our system-wide priorities. And the final one was what we're doing, is something that we're doing internally within our Population Health Committee. And that's looking at our own contribution as NHS Graham to community planning partnerships. So we're reviewing what we're contributing and trying to assess whether or not we're a good partner and where are the areas where we might be able to do more or do better. Next slide, Coco. So, and the final bit I just wanted to touch on is how we have tried to support our board members. So next slide, so we did some development work with our board, talking about how we take a whole system approach to prevention, but also embedding prevention in our health and care services. Sorry, next slide, but you can go on to the, and one more now, yeah. And so we talked through the, our framework for doing all this and then provided our board members with some questions that they could use in, or things that, you know, they need to be aware of in order to support this type of approach. And some of that was around just understanding the policy context, the scale of inequality and things around, you know, having a good grasp of the targets that we share with our partners and so on. So that when they're in conversations at IJBS or community planning, we're on the same page around, you know, where we are and what we, what we want to achieve. Next slide. And we did the same sort of thing around inequalities as well. And we provided a range of questions that they can consider asking when trying to constructively challenge around inequalities. Next slide. So I think that, so that's all I was going to say and I guess I was just going to end this with some questions. So what I've got on there is, do we as a community, do we as community planning Aberdeen want to adopt the intelligent board concept? And if so, then what is it that we need to do differently to create the space to allow this to happen?
Thank you, Shantini. Thanks very much, Michelle. I think that sets the scene. And I do have to apologize for the number of summary of recommendation, page 36 to 38. And then after we have the proper recommendation for the paper, they are in page 63. So approve the final report as a review community planning and recommendations and approve the master plan setting out proposed key steps, the local outcome improvement plan and locality plans 2026-36. So just to open it up and see how people wants, members of the board wants to react what they heard from Michelle and Shantini and from the papers, if you've got any questions or comment online or in the room. My start, if nobody else thinking about it. I know we've got a second agenda where we're going to talk a lot about it, but I just wanted to come back with a few things. And first of all, saying that I was a member of the Intuition Joint Board and I think it's a joint board. And I have to say, always in the missions where the NHS open up and have that place for constructive criticism. I don't know about our organisation. I know here at council, we maybe struggled a little bit with that and it's important that we got that place. So just to reassure member, this is the place where we can have that constructive criticism and thinking ahead or what we can do. You talked about intelligence, I think it's important to see that and how to share it. So what's your idea of the Intuition Board, if I may ask? How can we share it between all the partners?
I'm seeing a message from Phil saying that there's no audio online. Is it just that it's quiet? Quiet.
I heard that perfectly well, but for about three minutes beforehand, there was nothing. It wasn't just quiet, it was just complete silence.
If you may just pull the mic, see if that makes difference.
It was the same for me, Michelle, as well. I only, I can hear now, but I, for a second, it went, it went quiet, sorry.
Right, sorry about that. I think it was my mic that wasn't working. So I think, I think the question was, how do we apply that here with community planning Aberdeen? And I think that's something that we would have to work out as the board so that there's, you know, ownership around the process. And I think one of the ideas would be perhaps a development type session where, you know, could look at what that could look like. And then I just went on to say, with our Population Health Committee, we certainly make it a point to have those types of development sessions once a year. And that just gives us some space to think about what is coming down over the horizon and allows us then to think about what is it that we want to focus on the year ahead and therefore then start to plan our agendas and so on around that.
Thanks very much, Shantini. I think, Michelle, thinking that it's maybe a good idea and if the members of the board are happy with that, we'll maybe think, put that in the month to come. Any other comments, observations, what people want to make or questions? Yes, Councillor?
I was just wondering, listening to you, did you make changes to the space, the physical space? Because I do wonder sometimes whether a setup like this is often, is very, is not necessarily very collaborative, whether you get, so I did wonder, listening, did you, as part of looking at the intelligent board, think about the physical spaces as well?
Yeah, I suppose a little bit. So, you know, and I am thinking about this more in terms of our Population Health Committee and, you know, our meetings are online, so all totally on Teams. But we try and make it a point to have our development sessions in person, but in an atmosphere which allows for a bit of networking and, you know, informal conversations and things like that as well. Yeah.
That's a good idea because we did have a session, Fire and Rescue Services did offer us the support on one of the meetings. We might be able to do that, maybe NHS or anybody else wants to, to, to get involved. Instead of people coming to us, we are very happy as a board to go to different partners. So something maybe we can, we can work on. Any other comments online or in the room? Yes, Pete?
Yep. Thank you, Chair. It's not a question about the intelligent board, but rather it's a question about one of the recommendations, specifically recommendation 10 in the paper, which is on page 37 in the pack. And I'll just read it. It says, agree that a researcher from the Health Determinants Research Collaboration Aberdeen will be assigned to support each outcome improvement group from 2025. And I guess my question is, that's a great aspiration and, you know, very supportive. And I guess my question is, that's a great aspiration and, you know, very supportive. But is there sufficient resource for that across every improvement group?
Yes, and up.
Thank you. I can maybe help. So the Children's Services Board actually comprises of six of the outcome groups. So at our last meeting, we did have a researcher from the H D R C come to us, but they will sit on the board. And as a board, we will decide which project, I think they had some ideas following discussion that we had. So probably isn't looking, wouldn't require one body per outcome group, probably different ways of covering it.
Michelle wanted to come on.
Just to say that the plan is that we will have an embedded research. And I know that they have been identified. I think there's just one gap around the ADP at the moment. But they already have an academic around the ADP supporting. So individuals have been identified and at the moment they're doing a kind of induction. So they haven't joined all of the outcome improvement groups, but there is a plan for that.
Very good question, a good answer. Yes.
And just to add to that then, so this is clearly part of how we want to work as an H D R C to embed ourselves within community planning. And so as Michelle says, as the induction programme and so on, but really we want to see how this is working over the next six months or so, because that will then help us to generate some research questions, I think, or understand a bit better what our research priorities are, but informed by the local priorities. And just to add as well, we've had really good engagement from academics with this. And actually, most of our co applicants on the H D R C from academia have taken up those spaces.
Okay, we have Marty next.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very conscious that, very conscious that the intelligence board covers a very wide area. It's a very large environment with data, it's data rich, it's covering H D R C. I think, I think the work through Marmo will, will, will come in as well. There's quite a wide web network of various information processing procedures there. And I'm very conscious that we do need to give a special focus to those, to those themes which, where there are challenges, the poverty-related gap, for example, the poverty-related attainment gap, positive destinations, healthy lifestyles, life expectancy where there are, where there are issues. So what's the, what's the longer term? I mean, are we looking at a kind of a ten-year span? Which I think was mentioned previously, because the work does need to be very focused. We need to have more of that research, more, more analysis, but it does need to be very disciplined. So what sort of time scales are we looking at? I mean, if we're looking at a ten-year timeframe, that, you know, you risk, I think, losing, losing some of that focus. So just a sense of milestones and landmarks along the way would be, would be useful to know. Just so that we're, so that we're really concentrated on those, on those key points where we have struggled.
Thank you, councillor Greg. At the moment, our current approach is to break down our longer-term stretch outcomes into medium and short-term outcomes as required by the Community Empowerment Act. So we do do all that already. I guess what the report is highlighting that we, at this point, only have two years left of our current local outcome improvement plan. So technically, we're not taking a longer-term view. So moving to a rolling ten-year plan will mean that every time we update the plan, that we will look ahead again to the full ten years. However, in line with the Community Empowerment Act and good practice, we will continue to break those longer-term outcomes down into medium and short-term aims for improvement. The report is suggesting that we need to have higher-level strategic aims, but we will still need to look at them in the shorter term to ensure that we're confident that they will achieve longer-term goals.
Thank you very much. I think having that, having that structured timeframe, that's, that's really going to help. Are there any comparisons that we can make with other, with other areas? Because I think, I think monitoring our progress over, over the short, medium, long term will be crucial. But can we, are there other comparators where we can just check our progress over, over those time scales?
We've got the other thirty-one community planning partnerships that we can compare ourselves with in terms of approach to doing community planning. Obviously, we're all aiming to comply with the legislation, but how we interpret the legislation and how our local outcome improvement plan looks will differ. So we did do benchmarking on that as part of the review. So we've identified, for example, the role in ten-year plan as an area that we want to adopt. In terms of the actual outcomes data, though, we use the community planning outcomes profile that is prepared by the Improvement Service to understand how we compare in terms of outcomes to other CPPs. We've got a range of national forums that help us benchmark on the intervention. So that's something that's very important to our structure and something that will can continue to be.
That's, that's really helpful. Thank you. I guess the key, key test is monitoring those, those trends, seeing the reds turn into ambers and greens. That's where we'll really make the difference. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Martin. Anybody else online or in the room? I might ask about one of the recommendations is on page thirty seven. It's the one about, I agree, seventeen. Agree that public health, health determinants, research collaboration Aberdeen will review the data sets with the current population needs assessment framework and provide commentary on the data and what is telling us to support the deeper analysis of population need. I'm delighted that Professor Marmot coming and is coming to support us and help us. But are we, are we creating a new layer of, of, our, our report, are we going to get longer? It's one of the warning as well. I think Shantini was very good to say, too many words sometimes spoils the broth. Do we, how can we, having another layer of people looking at the data, and it's very good that we have, how are we going to deal with this as a board and as partners?
I can talk in terms of where we are with the population needs assessment, but Shantini may want to come in as well. So I think it's an important test because that would not be our intention to, to, to make things longer. But we certainly want things to be as comprehensive as possible. And the opportunity to involve partners that are involved in CHES and of course our H D R C are to just make sure that when we're drawing conclusions from the data, we're doing it on the basis of the most relevant data. So it's really a check on what we hold, what we review and whether we feel that that's the right data sets for us to identify priorities from, but I don't know, Shantini?
Yeah, no, so I, I, I think, Michelle, I don't think I've got much to add to that, other than to say, it doesn't mean that if we add another layer, it's necessarily going to be longer. I think what we're looking for is that depth of analysis and therefore interpretation around the data. And, you know, that can be a short summary, you know, as well. But the key thing is that we're interpreting the data in the right context. And, you know, that's when, you know, the scope to look at how we compare with others and what we learn from others to inform, you know, how we plan going forward.
No, thanks very much. I think the boards and members have reassured. Before we go on to the last conversation, I would love to say a few words about where we are at. On page thirty nine and three two two, I'd say that the gap is widening. Our local economy is more prosperous and we've seen that as one of the positive outcome. And yet more people, more of our children are living in poverty. That's the balancing of an economy more prosperous. And we live in a healthier, less polluted place. And we see that and we see the effort that has been made in the city. And yet vulnerable adults' health are declining. So I, I want us to be a bit more realistic of what we do. And I know Martin was talking about the green. We need to quantify what the greens are, what the reds are, and we need to balance that out. To my mind, if the reds, as the children living, more children living in poverty and more vulnerable adults' health declining, I think best ones are maybe the most important. So, so, so it's how we present that and how, it's a challenge for us, I think. So when I see the overall improvement that is presented in three point two five, I just, you know, just want to be honest out there, that we've got still a lot more to do. There's a lot more prevention to do and there's more partnership to do and different type of partnership maybe. So I'm looking for boards and partners to come with ideas. And thank very much, Shantini, to, to bring a lot of expertise coming from NHS Graham. And I've seen the explanation on three point two nine and we know what's happening out there. We've seen what the decision was taken yesterday again, which is going to be impact on all our services. We have to be careful keeping positive for our staff and making sure that we are working hard to, to achieve what we want to achieve, but being realistic, it's important, it's important as well. So that constructive criticism, I really wanted there and I'm happy to lead it today and to challenge ourselves just to make sure that we have better outcome for the people who need it the most. So the wellbeing of future generation can only be words. We need to start to see a change in the right direction. And therefore I do very much, I'm delighted to see that Professor Marmot and the meeting at the Douglas Hotel, I think was very encouraging. So let's see how we can work better. As I said earlier, I'm a bit afraid of duplication and adding too much on. I would suggest for our partners, for the board, maybe it's very thing we want to drop to replace with something that works better is maybe not a bad idea. But that would be my comment on the recommendation that we have today on page sixty three. I'm happy to approve the final report and the master plan setting for the proposed key steps. But I just wanted to make that, that realistic statement of where we are at. Anybody wants to add anything to this before we go to the next item? Happy to approve. I agree. Thanks very much. So we'll go next to the thematic session, children and young people. This session will explore how well we are improving outcomes for children and young people based on evaluations on progress. We'll come with Helena. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Allard, and thank you, Gogo, for popping that up. I guess I'm here today as outgoing chair of the Children's Services Board, sat next to the incoming chair. So we'll have a little bit of a double act today, so hope that's okay. To give you a little bit of context about the Children's Services Board, we have what we're calling radical candor at board meetings, where we almost have a agreement that we will call out if there's some of the activity of different partners is actually potentially adversely impacting another partner. And really, really good professional group, lots of lively discussion. And we do like scratching when we see something interesting to try and understand what is going on. And you'll have noticed from the papers, it's quite a lot of information that we collect and collectively analyse, including the annual report, including our latest promise report. Also, we obviously look at project end reports, et cetera, et cetera. So based on that, all of that information, Graham and I have attempted to synthesise everything that we hold under the key questions that were posed. And what I would propose to do, if it is going to work for the board, is to literally run through one slide at a time and then pause. I guess the statements I've made on the slides are based on evidence from somewhere. They're my conclusions and Graham's conclusions. You may land on a different conclusion, so probably quite helpful to have some discussion if that suits. Okay, thanks, Gogo. So there's lots that is promising. So we'll know that over the last few years, there have been some significant shocks, if you like, to the system. I guess downturn in oil and gas, then the pandemic being two major shocks. And with those shocks came some quite interesting things that were happening across workforce. One that was a particular challenge to our colleagues in health was the real difficulties in recruiting health visitors for some time. And I think we could see the impact of that in a range of different data sets. It's really, really encouraging that they're actually now presenting a more positive picture. And certainly Julie on our board has confidence that that will really, really help them be in a better position to support those families who need more targeted support moving forward. So I think that's a real positive for us to build on. The flexibility of the team in terms of exploring different models to try and cover those vacancies has been really quite impressive over the last few years. But it's great to see that that's settled down a little bit now. With that in mind, developmental milestones. Now, you'll be aware, there's lots of conversation nationally in terms of the impact of the kind of system shocks borne out of the pandemic over the last few years and the impact that's had on our children and young people. Now, we can see some of that in the developmental milestones and the proportion of children reaching developmental milestones. And you might remember from last year's annual report that we noticed at that point that if you look at citywide data, you can get a falsely hopeful picture. Well, again, this is a case that there is a slight improvement. We're actually better than the family group. It would be quite easy to sit and be quite smug around it. However, when I dig into the data by community, it's pretty grim, actually. It is absolutely determined by poverty in terms of uptake. Now, that for me says something about how those who are most vulnerable and need us most are not willing, able to access services in the way that we are presenting them. So, for example, we know Northfield as one of our most deprived communities in the city. It's a community without a GP practice, for example. So actually, what is it about potentially taking two buses to get to a GP practice is impacting on that data. There's something to unpick there for sure. But it's really quite stark when you look community by community. So we're thinking that through the future libraries model, there's a real opportunity there. Fiona, you'll know our chief officer of the IGB is very, very open to looking at how we can use those kind of community hub spaces and to explore how, how health services might be delivered in a more accessible way for some of our more vulnerable communities. There's another really key lesson around data sharing. I was really intrigued. Shantini, you mentioned data sharing. We went into a partnership with Social Security Scotland to try and make sure that we're targeting those two-year-old children whose parents and carers have experience of care. Now, we were doing quite well with that. We thought we were doing really well with that. But you'll realise that the children that we know have that entitlement, it probably comes from Graham. But they're obviously a raft of parents who are care experienced, who didn't come through Graham's system, who we have no knowledge of whatsoever. But by linking data sets with Social Security Scotland, we've got the list of all of those who are eligible and we can go directly. Through that really, really simple data sharing agreement, we've realised a twelve percent rise. Now, our, our numbers are quite good anyway. That's attracting quite a lot of national attention. I think there's a really, really key message in there around data sharing. And I know some partners can be really quite conservative, concerned, anxious, many other words I could use. I think we need to work together to make sure we're less concerned, because that's what we can do when we actually get those agreements in place. And I guess the last one on this first slide is around primary school attendance. There's something interesting going on and I don't understand it. So our, our general attendance is better than nationals, so that's encouraging. I think we're slightly better or in line with family group. But actually, there's something odd happening at primary one, which doesn't really make sense to me. You would have thought that with the eleven rollout of eleven forty, that attendance would be better. But something is happening, meaning that our attendance at P one is poorer than others. I don't know why that's happening. I need to go and dig into it. I'll pause.
Any comment and question, Martin?
Yeah, that, that information gap is, is really important. It's very, it's very worrying that it, that it's there. Particularly when our, when our focus, we've already agreed to target S I M D one, the areas of most need. And that, and that's where we've got that, that lack of, of, of knowledge. So are there, are there other ways of gaining data? I mean, you mentioned social security. I mean, you mentioned social security, are there other potential uses, I don't know, police or whoever? There's, I mean, there must be more evidence out there that can add to the picture.
We've already got a really effective memorandum of understanding with MDWP, for example. Some really nice work going on there. But I think it's sharing those data sets wherever we can, when we've got a clear purpose for doing so. There are, there can be resistance, did I say, Shantini, health can be quite resistant. But actually, there's something quite interesting we'll potentially do with a housing lens, whereby we're looking to try and share health data that would potentially influence some of our housing policy. If you think about the impact that dampen mold, for example, could have on a family with an asthmatic, it might actually be interesting and helpful for us. So we're trying to explore that, but it's not without challenges. People tend to be very, very cautious about getting data sharing agreements in place. So we're very fortunate in the council, we've got Helen Canings, who's quite a formidable force in trying to encourage people to do the right thing and the legal thing, but it's a work in progress.
Thanks very much, because I think it is a real priority to have that, to have that knowledge about the people. Because the community hubs, the library services review, all of that could make quite a big difference. That could really help to empower communities, help to deliver services locally. But you need to have, you need to have the evidence, you know. So that all these, I mean, that's just stating obvious, but there's some really positive opportunities I think we've got.
There is one real opportunity, which again, there's a little bit of anxiety about. So Graham's team, Claire's team in the IGB, educational psychologists have moved on to D365. So actually, we've got that controlled sharing of data, all very legal, but actually allows us to match. Now, next step, I'd be to get housing on, because that's got huge potential. We'd love education to go on as well, I've got a long list for Steve Rowde. But actually, the power would come when partners jumped on board as well. Now, again, we can get some resistance. Quite often, you know, national systems and people feel that they can't take that leap. But actually, using a common system would actually allow us to almost have that data instantaneously about those families who need us most. So probably a long-term aim. Yeah, probably said enough on that.
Thank you. So it's just to reassure really that I think we do see the value and certainly we, the data sharing to enable us, so I think data sharing in a safe haven, where it's used for research at aggregate level, we're really comfortable with. But I think this is about taking it to the next stage where we can share across sectors to inform practice. So I know that we've got a few strands running to try and get to that place and it's frustratingly taking longer than we would like, but it's certainly an area that we're trying to progress.
So yeah, that's all, that's all good, but mention of partners need to be encouraged. Are these governmental level, are these kind of distant national organisations or closer to home perchance?
Probably the big nationals, so Police Scotland, for example, would have their own system. There'd be a range of systems within health. So some of the challenges are when something has been set in place nationally, people feeling that they wouldn't have the authority, if you like. But the real challenge is for every significant case review that's undertaken, one of the reasons for a child death will be the lack of effective sharing of information. So there's a really, really simple solution, but there's nervousness. Graham, would you say anything else on that?
Not really anything to add to that, you know, there is that nervousness, but there is still that sort of, there is work going on nationally, which will help particularly using the KI numbers and around how we can actually begin to export data from different systems where there is a KI number recorded and that is a common data field that actually we all have. Is that, and so that can begin to help think some of that information sharing. It's a step in the right direction, it doesn't go as far as the sort of that broader information sharing.
We had that discussion as the Antibiodiversity and Inequality Committee, I think it was fair as well. And I think that is maybe something the board wants to do. We could decide to write something together to the national institutions and see if something can move on. Because if sometimes it's not the legislation, which could be a barrier, it could be the way people operate. Or I think if we could find that, if everybody is happy with that, we maybe want to draft something and to write to the powers to be and see if we could try to do this. I don't know if we're the only one that are thinking that. I know that the third sector organisation are really, really pushy heart to get better data sharing. I don't know if other community planning boards are in the same situation when we are.
I'm very surprised our chief exec hasn't come in about this one. I think we're probably the only, we're the only local authority who's actually invested in developing the system. If Angela were, should be, we all have the ability to use D365, so everyone's already paying for it. What we also do though is for every management information system we use, for example, CEMUS in schools, Graham used to use Care First, there's a very, very hefty yearly fee. So there's actually a cost saving in here as well. If we actually get D365 extended so that everyone has from it what they need, takes initial investment to make it exactly what we need. But then there's actually a significant saving, because all partners already would have access to the Microsoft 365 suite. So it's, we're just a wee bit further on, I think, than others.
Good to the chief executive to come back.
Thank you, councillor Allard. I've recently had very positive conversations with Deputy Chief Constable, actually, about data and data sharing. And she's connected me into some national colleagues to explore the role and involvement, hopefully, of Police Scotland and D365. I'm also a member of a national group on public protection, which through the lens of work that's been done across Scotland on chronologies, us looking at technology solutions. And those colleagues have been linked to Graham Simpson. So I think there's movement, councillor Allard, to really explore more around the opportunity that D365. So at this point in time, I feel positive about the engagement with the Deputy Chief Constable and positive about the national discussions that are taking place. So I might ask you to suspend that offer just now. And if we don't make the progress, that we can come back and follow up on your request. But I think there probably are, in fairness to partners, there are some technical issues and there are some anxiety. And I think just getting underneath the skin of that bit more and for national colleagues to understand that this isn't particularly for Aberdeen, this is actually a technology that all public bodies have got access to. So why would we not use it? But happy to report back at a future point on the progress that hopefully we can make through those two different pincer movements.
Thanks, Angela. And if any partners think at one point we need to go national, certainly yourself, Angela, but anybody else, let us know. And we'll draft something and you can draft something and we can send it from other partners.
Thank you. I guess data is really key in all of this. And where we have someone in, say, an Aberdeen system or a Grahamian system, that's fine. But where we have movement of people throughout the country, and that's where the national picture really comes in. Are you finding that that is causing more challenges to developing all of this? I know obviously NHS Graham doesn't access other health boards' information, for example. There's no sort of cross talk in there. So I guess what can be linked up, how can we link up? And how is it holding back the progress that we could be making?
I'll maybe start and then pass it to Graham. So there are real disadvantages quite often to some of our most vulnerable. So I'm very surprised Phil's not jumped to come in on this point. So currently, if one of our care experienced young people is placed in another local authority, because they would be supported health-wise by another health board, there's no visibility. So the corporate parent is in NHSG, but they have no visibility whatsoever of what's happening in T side. Now, there's something really wrong about our systems and we can't actually make sure that we're looking after our most vulnerable. But Graham, you might want to add.
It was that very point I was going to flag. And it goes beyond that as well, in terms of just again, how do we join up CEMUS as well, which is a national system? But also how do we actually track the progress, the academic progress of our children in terms of that? So there is, and clearly there's a responsibility in us to try and think about not sending some of our young people out of the city. But actually, that will always be a need that we will have to do from time to time. But when we do that, we need to be able to ensure that we are tracking their wellbeing, their outcomes and their improvements at all time around that as well.
Thanks very much, Helena. Now Phil wants to add something and he'll take you back after, Melinda.
Thank you very much. I think to some extent, both Helena and Graham have made the main points I was going to make. I think though, we do need to be clear that we have to have a purpose for that type of information sharing. Simply collecting the data for the purpose of collecting the data is not of itself, I would contend, sufficient. We need to make sure this is linked into improved outcomes for those individuals and ensuring that in the longer run, the potential risk of future inequalities, which might accrue to affect the health and social wellbeing of those individual children are seen as a paramount justification for this information sharing. It is unfortunate that in terms of keeping track of a child who is placed outside of the city boundary, we are more likely to have information being shared about the cost associated with the provision of care, rather than the outcomes and the benefits that child accrues as a consequence of that placement. So I think there is some elements here of ensuring that the systems that we are discussing are capable of capturing the outcomes and that the outcomes are shared for best effect with the child at the centre, as GREFC would require us to do.
A good point, well made, Phil, thanks very much for that. Melinda, you wanted to come back.
Yeah, it was just, it's a really interesting discussion, because I guess it's not even just children we're placing out with the city. There are children coming to the city who we have no information on and also need to work in their best interest. So I guess it's just something to keep in mind as we move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or shall we go? Because you've got a part as well. So shall we go ahead if no more comments? Thank you.
Thank you. So around free school meals, it's probably a picture that you recognise. There has been an increase in uptake, but there still is variability from school to school. It's really interesting when you try to understand the story of each school, particularly our secondary schools, that actually I think there's a direct link there between the number of food outlets, which I think then again links you in with the healthy weight agenda. So that there's absolutely something around that, around licensing and everything else there. Around dental health, again, evidence of some improvement there, but it's very similar to the data shared on the last slide. The differences, community by community, are quite stark when you look at it. Having said that, some of our more deprived communities, for example, Torrey, there's some really nice work that's been done there that I think could be built upon and potentially spread. I think there's been a really, really proactive local dentist in the community, worked really, really well with our health colleagues. So something there to build on. In terms of national five presentations, again, we've had an increase, we've had a real push across education in terms of increasing ambition, I think we can see all of that coming through. There is something there though, however, around the number of passes. So the education services are currently working to get better visibility in terms of youngsters who are anticipated to pass and potentially at what level. So that piece of work is ongoing. And then the last point making there, this has been a really, really encouraging piece of work, which continues. Our work around ABZ Campus now seeing some really clear evidence of an increase in tariff points. And what's really, really interesting, when we look at our comparators, we are bucking the trend. Now, we're not where we'd want to be and we're not up in those top quintiles where we'd absolutely want to be. But we're improving and others aren't in those tariff points. So there's something quite powerful there that we just need to incrementally build. When I look at how that is incrementally building, I'm really comfortable. I guess experience would tell me in education that if you have a very rapid big bang, you don't sustain it. If you have incremental growth, that's going to be a better thing. So I'm really encouraged by the latest bit of data I've seen on ABZ Campus.
Yeah, great team from ABZ team again, Martin.
Thank you, on ABZ Campus. So is it possible to link directly those tariff point improvements to ABZ Campus? Is that because of the diversifying of the curriculum, more offers, outside organisations coming in and delivering all of that?
All of the above, and yes, I can link it directly back to individual pupils. So we've been quite tough on Mark in terms of making sure that we can absolutely track it. And we know that that's the thing that's made the difference, there is evidence that is the difference. So that's really encouraging, so I think we just need to continue. I think you'll be receiving yearly reports for a wee while yet, but we incrementally build it. But I'm really comfortable with the evidence coming through.
Any comments and question before, oh yes, Kate?
Thank you, Convy, there. There was two things I wanted to ask about, first of all, the free school meals. There was the, there was a survey done by, with the parents about parent councils maybe last year. And then they were going to get a sister help with analysing the results. And I haven't ever seen that come back. So, you know, I think there are questions around secondary schools and foods and things like that. And I was wondering what happened to that.
I can answer that one. So I reached out through Dr Murray, who's on the Education Committee. She went back into the Citywide Parent Forum. I had a meeting with two representatives and said, two options for them, they could give me their survey and I would probably use a bit of co-pilot to do what I could with it. Or we could run another survey, or if based on what they could see, we could look and probably sit with the school meal service and see if we could pull an action plan together. They've never come back to me. So I have made that offer because I agree there was learning there that would have been helpful. I can do no more than make the offer, they've never shared it. If there's anything you can do in terms of through the, that would be great.
I can message Dr Murray and have a chat, but yeah, very easily. Our sons are in the same year at school. So, okay, my other question was about the dental health. So obviously, there's been a movement to, it's once the appointments have changed. So children used to be, they would have six monthly appointments. Now it's annual appointments through the NHS Dental Service. Now, do we think we'll see any, that is, looks really positive, but I'm just wondering whether we'll see any difference with the move to the annual appointments?
So I'm not sure I know the answer to that. So I think, well, we can certainly look and see if there are any projections or anything like that and come back. But I guess, you know, time will tell, but I'm not aware that there were any concerns as such yet.
Because it does worry me that we have moved to that model. And what I can see, so my son has been told he's a low likely, he's not unlikely to have any issues. And so it will be, he will be annual. But if we're expecting parents to pay, if the children are considered to be at more of a risk to have a six monthly checkup, then, you know, that does worry me. So I do wonder if there's a more targeted approach to that. Or maybe there is and I'm just not aware of it, but I think that would be interesting to see.
It'll be good to find out, and to be sure, all members of the board. Any other commenting question? Yes, Kate?
Just on that, I don't think there's a suggestion that the move to annual appointments would mean that they can't access dental services at other points and there would be still no, there's still free dentists to treat treatment at those intervals, would be my understanding of the position.
Okay, nice gratification, thank you very much, Kate. Anybody else? No, we move on, thank you.
Thank you, next slide please, Gogo. Thank you. Next slide, please. Go, go. So so ninety two percent of our communities are performing well compared to their comparator communities. You'll remember Michelle made reference to the Improvement Service Community Planning Tool. And that allows us to compare ourselves with our family groups, so others who have a similar demographic to us. So that on face value is actually really encouraging. There are lots of local authorities who aren't in that position. However, when you actually start to bundle wider measures together, that drops to seventy eight percent. Still not bad compared to all others, but it but it just does show how when you add a little bit more complexity in the mix and maybe some additional challenges, that actually that that data drops significantly. So you'll know that that is very much being targeted through our FEDAR Futures partnership work and our lead starts next week. So that'll be great to get that up and going. I think again, from the review, particularly from the annual review, it's really clear that we need to keep on doubling down our efforts to have data at community level. Quite often when I'm reviewing the data, which ordinarily happens in December, when I have a bit of a master number crunch, and some of the data is quite old as I'm looking at it. So just that lack of live community level data can can be a challenge. So I think it's just an area we need to continue to work on. And I think there's some positive signs coming through that more people are claiming the benefits that they are entitled to, which is good. But I think there is a wee word of caution in there. And so the the FIT team within the council, really, really easy to access. And there are health visitors pushing out information, all schools are pushing out information. Then we have a leaflet drop about three, four times a year, really effective. And we could see the the amount claimed coming through, which is great. But there is more than the local authority provide that service. But it's harder to get into access services from others. So what is happening? Saw this in a recent project end report. What is happening is because it's harder elsewhere, we're pushing additional pressure on the ACC FIT team. Now, they're not in any way complaining. But I guess the bit I think board needs to be mindful of is some of the other organisations are funded to do this, but they're not making it easy for people. So there is something there about, I guess, us holding everyone to account in terms of making it as easy as possible. Transitions, some good early work going, but there's still a need to do a little bit more. I think it would be fair to say, Graham, wouldn't it, that actually um, at that point of transition from the children's to the adult system, there can sometimes be a slightly unrealistic expectation of what might be possible as an adult. So we'll have a little bit more work to do there in terms of smoothing that out. And the last point on that slide is around homelessness. I think what's really, really interesting is when you start to pull all these data sets together and you realise that housing absolutely needs to be at the heart of our family support model.
Good. And we've got a prince as well, helping us formlessness. So we've got so much help from from everywhere. Any question and comments on that? Anybody? Melinda?
I guess just around the benefits claimants, it's very positive to see that benefits are we are seeing more benefit claimants through that are being successful, I guess. I worry about the narrative that's coming out of both national governments and whether there might be some stigma attached to that. So I guess we have to be really mindful about what we're putting out as a local authority um, around benefits and the stigma that's attached to it. And anecdotally, you know, those other support services are seeing a lot of strain. And I I agree with you, we need to sort of scrutinise that and see, because I know the likes of CAB, and we're currently looking at a twelve week waiting list just to get an initial appointment. And that's the feedback we're getting. And that concerns me because if folk are waiting twelve weeks and then have, you know, you see waiting times as well. And that is essentially eighteen weeks that people are not getting money, they're not getting support. And I guess while the FIT team are very effective and excellent at their job, and we need to be making sure that everyone is is sort of wrapping round as well. And because some people don't like coming to the council for whatever reason, and that is a big concern of mine.
Yeah, hopefully it will be reassuring to know that the the information that's circulated now to parents of under fives and children of school age started actually first being used during the pandemic. And I guess we were within a cost of living crisis, I'm still in it, as you'll you'll be aware. And we were really, really concerned about folk then being in their homes and potentially not being in a position to heat them. So that's kind of where it started. So so the language used within the booklet is really carefully chosen. It's very much about entitlements. We've actually had some targeted pushouts to individual families, for example, those with complex needs who maybe have additional kit to plug in, et cetera. I think that they were a group we were particularly concerned about during the pandemic because that group would not have been able to return to school when other children did because of the need to continue to to self isolate in many cases. So I think it's now recognised, it's pushed out universally. It's not a case of only given to some, everyone gets it. The beauty of technology, you can get it in everyone's inboxes. We do see our uptick in folk actually getting in touch with teams and using the benefit after each mail shot. So as long as we're seeing that, we'll keep on going. But but we did choose, just to give you some, we've been really careful with the language. Yeah.
Absolutely. Stigma upon stigma, you know, claiming benefit that you're entitled to. Just the word claiming and benefit doesn't work with entitlement. And even entitlement is seen as a negative. When it, when it's a right, it's an entitlement, we should maybe put the word right next to it just to make sure that people understand what it's about. I've got a father with disability who never, never, ever has a state for anything. Trying to tell people that entitlement is a very important thing in a democracy. It's what you're entitled to, it's your right, you will not refuse any other rights, you need to have to take that right hand. So how can we, I've seen we're doing some progress. How can we develop in our narrative, in our images? How how we can transform and especially with the media just now, politicians using these words as as a weapon to stop people claiming or, you know, standing for their right, their entitlement right, you know, how how can we do that better? Of all, for all organisations, because I think we all had whatever doctors, social worker or anybody else having somebody in front of them saying that, oh, I'm not sure I'm entitled to it. And and I don't want to claim something that I'm not sure I need. How how we can real but having a common message across partners?
Not sure I'll have all the answers to that. And what I can share is we've tried to actually make the support available as within the community wherever possible. So you'll be aware that schools receive Scottish attainment challenge funding. Some of that funding is used to fund money advisers who had actually started off very much being based in schools. We saw a really interesting shift initially, really busy in schools. Then actually people have been choosing to have that conversation out with school. So that's absolutely fine, it's been a real shift. So so now that is very much being channeled through the FIT team, the resource is still there. Still very much doing the the job that it's done really, really well for a number of years now. But we're just trying to respond to how people are choosing to access advice and and services, if you like.
Anybody else want to add anything before we go to the next?
Oh, just to add to that, we've also ensured that within the FIT-like services in the city, there is a money wellbeing person. So it means there's not a referral on to somebody else. They will hold the hand literally and sometimes, you know, literally, literally and sometimes in reality to to accompany them to benefit appointments or or benefit assessments is to actually make that that easier. We have to recognise as well that many of those that who are not claiming their entitlement have got low levels of literacy and numeracy. And how do we make that that path as easy for them as we possibly can?
You have to rise, not only literacy and numeracy, it's also being able to express yourself. It, you know, that that could be a barrier. And we've got the Ben House, which is going to be a great help that people don't have to repeat their story of the time. But how many people who need that help have to repeat their stories all all the time. So things we can do between partners to avoid that journey and to make sure that point is always the same. And 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 people are hurt, you know, it's very important. Anything else? No, we can do the next one.
And as I mentioned earlier, and the board are great, and the radical candour is rife, which is great. Been some really, really nice improvement projects taken forward, some really strong project end reports. The thing I would flag up, and it's probably the truth bomb of the the afternoon, is that the leadership of that work is not equal. And I do think we potentially need to have a little bit of a resetting at some point. So that duty in terms of annual reporting sits equally across the local authority and the health board. And but it doesn't feel equal. But I'll maybe just leave that one there. That's Phil, Phil and I have had the truth bomb conversation as well. In terms of the Beards Hoes. Really exciting that that should open this year. We're still keen to get a couple of agreements though. I think we're still to fully nail down um, how um health will be based within that, Graham might want to come into that. And also a commitment from the court in terms of time scale. But I think we're getting there around that. In terms of our edge of care pilots, I think we've got a really nice example there of when reorganising resources can actually really help improve outcomes. So I think we need to do an awful lot more of that. And one of the kind of key ingredients around that seems to be colocation. And it does feel a little bit like when we speak about colocation, we're still speaking about that being something quite different. I think we need to move from that being different to now it just being the the norm. And I guess we'll speak a wee bit more about the promise again later. But Graham, you might want to come in about the Beards Hoes.
Thank you, Eleanor. Yes, we're on track that will, the Beards House will open in the summer. And whilst we speak about the building, I think the Beards House is much more than the building. It is about the relationships, it's about their processes, it's about our interagency working and collaboration. But having that shared located space will enable the these, it will help set the conditions for these. We will take a deeper dive in looking at the justice element of the Beards House and but we have that court link established. And how do we maximise that as well? So so there is development locally later this month in relation to trauma-informed domestic abuse arrangements through our court systems and how we can change there, trying to shorten the length of time from um, an incident happening to to the court, the court system dealing with it. And that would also allow children and indeed women to give give out evidence in a safe space. And we would want the Beards House to be that safe space for them to to give evidence. So there's a number of competing and and overlapping policies and priorities that that would have. And so how can we actually ensure the Beards House is a, is is being channeled a lot of those through there as well? Clearly, again, another area would be around the interviewing of vulnerable adults. You know, why wouldn't we want to use that space to sort of maximise those opportunities in in creating a safe nurturing environment for for vulnerable adults to come in and and be interviewed when they when they need to give a statement to the police?
Very encouraging. And and let's see what we can think from there afterwards. Absolutely right, yeah. Anybody else wants to make a comment? Yes, Madam?
Yes, I wanted to ask if there are solutions for this disparity in leadership of improvement? Sorry to ask.
I got away with that one nicely, councillor Greg. I I think the most significant challenge comes from, I guess, committing the resource to undertake the statutory duties of pulling together the Children's Services Plan, undertaking the annual report and any other reports that we decide as a board to to produce. So and I've been the chair of the Children's Services Board for about three years, is that right, Graham? Something like that. And and I would have said the contribution from ACC has been probably about, and with no exaggeration, about ninety five percent of it. That doesn't feel right when it's a shared statutory duty. And I have flagged it up, we've not really got anywhere with it. So I guess I'm just important to flag it up when it's a shared statutory duty.
Totally. Maybe there's something, maybe we can have some feedback from the five percent and find out what can be done to address this.
You did say you had conversation with Phil as well about that.
Yes, we have, we have had a couple of conversations. In fact, I think fundamentally, the the there are two parts to this. And I can see there's a certain degree of amusement there, which is, which is, which is quite, quite welcome. The first is actually being better cited on different time scales and different elements of governance which need to be aligned to make sure that resource can be committed in a way that produces documentation which can go through those shared governance routes. One report, shared responsibilities can actually create multiple governance that we need to to work through quite carefully. But I think actually there is a second part to that, which is simply ensuring that we plan together for these reports. And we are very clear on the contributions that are needed from the relevant organisations to be able to deliver those reports.
Very good. Frank discussion is what we want. Eleanor, you want to come back?
Yes, I'd be happy to respond. I I wish it were as Phil describes, where there was a couple of times in a year when you were going to be busy. And it's not like that. It's it's actually a full-time job. Because there are, you've got that constant cycle of preparing, monitoring, tracking, supporting. And then you've obviously got your annual reporting. So my sense is that as a local authority, we commit resource to it. And my sense is, if I'm being really honest, across NHSG, it's someone being asked to have a look at something or or do a little bit without actually resource being committed. I don't think the job can be done without resource being committed to it. But I've probably said enough.
So more core working.
If I might just come back and say that the the point is well made. And perhaps that's a conversation that we can take off table today, but come back with a more concrete, positive way forward for for the Community Planning Board to be brought up to speed.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Phil. Yeah, and I was going to say something along those lines, which is, you know, yeah, we can certainly look at it, Eleanor, and yeah, work way, work out a way forward.
Martin, yeah. So I have a question on on Beards Hoes. I'm looking at incorporating care of adults, interviewing adults and so forth. Was that always, was that always within the operational plan? Or are we looking at evolving? Are we going to have to review some of some of the policy and the procedures? It, I mean, it it does sound like a natural progression, like so that it's more of a family's house rather than a just a Beards House.
So there are elements of the Beards House delivery, councillor Greg, that were always going to be family orientated. The recovery element will always think about the whole family, not just simply the needs of the child. I think what we recognise is we've got a facility, we want to use that to its maximum potential. So the Beards House will always be about thinking about the protection and care of very vulnerable children who have experienced harm and abuse, or those who have perpetrated harm and abuse under the age of criminal responsibility. But actually, how do we, how do we maximise that? We've got changing and changing parameters in in relation to children giving evidence to court and appearing in court. So how do we think about that within the context of a of the court suite that we will have within within the Beards House around it? Hopefully, we'll move to a position where children are not charged within police stations. Again, how do we use the Beards House to think about that evolving needs? I think it will be incremental. This is not all going to happen on day one. And nor should it happen on day one. We need to, we need to focus on the core intentions of the Beards House and build from that position.
Thank you. I mean, I think that that's very positive to try and find how can we maximise the use of this of this resource. I think that I think that's all really, really, really constructive. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Do you want to go to the next one? Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully this next slide, I'm going on to the next question, but I don't think there will be too many surprises here. So in terms of what we need to do and where we need to be bolder, I think it is really thinking about accessibility. I think there is very, very clear evidence from our more vulnerable community. I think there is very, very clear evidence from our more vulnerable communities that us continuing to deliver lovely middle-class design services is just not working for them. So I think we all need to take a real cold, hard look at ourselves and be very, very open to doing things very, very differently. Um, in terms of co-location, like I said that last time, we need to move from testing. It is now the norm. We have clear evidence that that works well for those that we support. So we need to move that one forward. Um, data, um, has come up several times through the discussion. That one's absolutely critical. And I think actually as, as all partners are actually looking at making efficiency savings, it becomes even more critical in terms of making sure that we can see any impact, um, of budget decisions from different partners. And also make sure that we're investing in the right areas collectively. I think there's a, a, a theme coming through as well when you look at, uh, data for adults particularly around autonomy and agency that we picked up particularly in the, the future libraries model. Um, I think there's just a plethora of evidence that tells us that actually people don't feel connected at community level. Um, and I think we've got a real need to move that one forward. I'll maybe do the next slide as well now as well. And then I've given you all of my kind of thinking around that second question. Um, public protection, I think, um, from the discussion that we had earlier as well. That, that absolute need to look at public protection, if you like, within the context of a model of family support. If the model of family support isn't working, you'll actually get folk within public protection systems. So we need to be better at looking at those together. Uh, I think mental health and resilience. And some of it is about resilience. I think there has been a change in, um, expectations, reactions, et cetera, from people whereby, um, we, we don't do speak maybe quite quickly in terms of a mental health need rather than thinking about developing the resilience and, and mental wellbeing possibly. So I think there's maybe a wee bit of a, a, a reset and need a strategy on how to, to reset that. And I guess just the last point I would make is, I, I think we're at a point where we've got some really successful tests of change and we maybe need to be bolder with them. So I guess the one I've, I mentioned is the neurodevelopmental pathways test of change, which there was funding for a short term, hugely successful, uh, test of change. Really raised expectations in the stool where it was run. And then the money went and the resource went. And I've got head teacher holding an expectation that there's no way of meeting. I, I guess just, I think the discipline of if we're getting ourselves involved in a test of change, we need to be up to changing the system at the end of it. It can't be a case of we can only do that if you give us extra money to do it. Cause I don't think we're in that point.
Yeah, absolutely. Give you your last point, expectation, you know, if you raise expectation and then you withdraw, uh, whatever the service is or whatever it is, then we, we are causing the hurt, you know, uh, we, we can't say it's, it's a condition, it's something else. It's we are, our services, we are directly responsible. And, and I, I absolutely agree with that. So another big challenge for us and being more bold about it.
Yeah, no, Eleanor, I, I think I can resonate with that. I think there are lots of examples that we've got where we've just not thought through exit strategies. And, and particularly now it, it's, um, more, uh, important, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need to be more realistic of what we do and what the outcome is going to be. And I have, I'm, I'm, I'm quite encouraged with what we heard today. Uh, and, and we had some new approach as well, which is interesting. I'm just, I, I hear you, Eleanor. I think we need to help one another. I think that's important to do. And we've got to lighten the load as well. Do things that works as opposed to, uh, uh, maybe. And that's come from the report to the work on the ground. We have to be careful, uh, to not overstretch ourselves. Uh, when the results, as I said earlier, are not the one we, uh, want to see. Any, uh, comments anybody wants to make or any questioning for Eleanor? Online first. We had Phil was very good to make some commitments. As Sarah. Yes, John wanted. John wanted to come in.
Yeah, thanks. Just want to pick up on, on Eleanor's point, um, on mental wellbeing and resilience. When you say there's a need to have a clear strategy. I mean, my sense on this is that there's quite a lot going on and maybe it's just a question of joining stuff up. So maybe doing a kind of assessment of, of what we have got that's going on and, and working out how to link the various bits together.
This was a hot topic of conversation at the last Children's Services Board, and I'm sure Phil is going to actually describe this in a far better way than, than I would. I guess I'm mindful that actually some of what is being described as a mental health need now um, wouldn't have been described that way pre-pandemic. And then there does seem to have been something around, I guess, resilience that maybe feels like it's been knocked a little bit. Folk are a wee bit less resilient. And I just wonder if we need a bit of a strategy to increase that resilience. Or I think our numbers are going to continue rising. Um, and, and the reality is there isn't the resource then to, to go in and support. But Phil will say that far more eloquently than I.
I, I wouldn't necessarily say that at all, uh, Eleanor, but I'll have, I'll have a go. Um, I, I think, John, you're, you're right. There is an element in here of refocusing and being clear that what we're putting our time and effort into and financial resource into is delivering outcomes which are building mental wellbeing. And in that context of prevention, building resilience, which, which makes people better able to, to benefit from the types of intervention that we're putting in place. And I think against that background, we have seen changes in not just the, the, the kind of individuals who are coming forward in need of additional support. But sometimes the capacity of services to be able to respond positively to the kind of requests that are coming in because there is a mismatch there. So I think part of, of, of saying being bolder to achieve the strategic shift. It's understanding what is that type of shift itself that's needed to be bolder. And then ensuring that we're building, as you rightly say, from those elements that we already have. But perhaps in some cases flexing them to, to broaden their preventative and early interventional, uh, scope.
Thank you, Phil, for that. Uh, Sarah, you wanted to add something? I've seen you put something on the chat.
Yeah, just to say, um, but prior to these meetings, um, I do, um, have a conversation with the team at ACVO. And Jet in particular has been, uh, has given, um, you know, information around the context and, and just, she wanted to pass on her thanks and from ACVO in particular, uh, to all the support and collaborative working that, um, the third sectors. Um, you know, it's, this is an uphill struggle and we get that, but we're, we're really grateful for all the support and being part of discussions and moving things forward. So, um, yes, from, on behalf of Jet and the team at ACVO, um, thank you for, for, uh, for the way things are working.
Thank you, Sarah. Very much appreciated. Michael, we send you praises. We get vaccinations. So anything you want to add?
No, nothing from me. Thank you. Cheers.
Brilliant. Thanks very much. Anybody else present want to add anything? Thanks very much, Eleanor, for the presentation. And I think we all have a lot of work to do. And thinking about working differently and looking at what this outcomes, the most important ones. I'm not trying to say that outcomes are not important, but I really want us to, to, uh, to, to concentrate on this.
Just to highlight that there is one last slide. I wasn't sure if you wanted to cover that as well.
Gogo, if you could move on to the, so just to, to build on, on the presentation a little bit and, and, and recognising the, the board's responsibility in terms of delivering the promise, um, I've just, eh, inserted a few slides that's just to, sir, uh, set out the work in relation to that. And so colleagues will remember that in 2020, the independent care review was published and that received cross-party support. And, and that cross-party support was re-emphasised in December. Um, 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 when, when the minister introduced an update to the parliament at, at that point in time. The Plan 2124 was then published and that, eh, set out the roadmap for delivering the promise over the initial three years. And a further plan was published in June of last year, Plan 2430, which sets out the next six years in terms of the activities and the change that is required around it. Increasingly, we have sought to integrate and ensure the Children's Services Plan speaks to as many of the elements of the, the promises we possibly can to, to minimise our reporting duties and, and also to maximise that cross-working arrangements as, as well. But in February of this year, the Promise Oversight Board published its third annual report, which actually marked the halfway point of delivering the promise. And, and its evaluation was that whilst that was the halfway point, Scotland yet, wasn't yet at the halfway point of being, of delivering the promise. Um, and, and so it, it was a call to arms in many respects that we need to continue to push collectively together to, to ensure that is the case. And in that report, they identified two, uh, key priority areas. And, and they both align very much to elements that Eleanor has already spoken to. One is that development of whole family preventative support, really preventing families from reaching that point of crisis in their lives where, where services intervene or have to intervene or actually can, are compelled to intervene in their lives to keep children and, and individuals safe as well. So really strong crucial that. But also recognition that there's a continuing need to hold the hands of those who hold the children's hands, supporting the workforce, um, throughout that as well. And when we say the workforce, we don't just mean children's social work. We do mean the entirety of the workforce, those paid and those unpaid as well, who, who all have a critical role to doing that as well. Um, so, so, so all of that, that, that was, was helpfully set out in, in that evaluation. But also in terms of, of, of assessing that progress. Um, the promise progress report was agreed and published in December of last year. And that will become an annual national report, which will set out, um, Scotland's deliverables, um, intentions, uh, deliverability of the promise. That's not going to be a static framework. It's going to be an evolving one over the course of the next five years as, as more indicators are considered. And, and it goes back to that element of data sharing a, a, around that as well. But, but nonetheless, the first promise progress report will be published in November next year. And the Children's Services Board has already agreed that to be adopted as its data reporting. So we will be able to have a local report which is able to benchmark against a national report as well. And that'll be the report that I'll bring to this, um, board in, in a year's time, setting out that, that progress as, as well in, in terms of, of seeing that progress as well. I'll maybe just do Eleanor's trick and maybe just pause to see if there's any questions that people want to ask in relation to that.
Martin.
Um, thank you. I'm looking, I'm looking at the two points where the targets are not being achieved, um, nationally. And I'm wondering if we are managing to deliver on the promise locally. Um, but for example, in relation to that whole family preventative support, are we able to maybe buck the national trend locally with some of our innovative family support work?
Difficult to say because there is no national benchmarking to measure ourselves against at this particular point in time. And, and so I think it's that, that's the gap that I think is, is, is currently being experienced. Um, I think it's interesting that, um, Eleanor and I are currently just finishing off just a sort of a, a work to think through the whole of Plan 2430. And doing a bit of a self-evaluation against some of that, um, activity as well. There are areas we have got very much, um, in our, in our sights and, and are making, I think, positive and good progress. There are other areas we know that we still need to make further progress, which we find sticky. We know the impact of poverty is, is still very much at the heart of our, our care experience community. Both their experiences pre-care and indeed post-care as, as well, and, and, and how it's impacted upon them.
Uh, thank you, because I'm just, I'm just thinking, we do, we do have some models of good practice, some of emerging um, innovative solutions which are surely making a difference. But I, I, I guess there's that challenge of being able to measure impact. So that's appreciated. Thank you.
You just move on then, Gogo. Now, I'll probably just take that a bit further than Martin in, in terms of this. This is, um, a sort of an evaluation that we have made. No, back one, Gogo, please, if you wouldn't mind. Um, to, there's a slide missing. There's two pie charts on it.
Just talk.
Okay, fine. Uh, if you, if, take it back then, one. So there is two pie charts. I'll circulate these slides after the meeting, uh, so people can see that. And, and it shows that work is underway. And we've just used that model because that was a model that the promise Scotland used to evaluate Scotland's progress. So we very much mirrored that as well. And we have made progress in, in the, it doesn't look as if it's much.
Yeah, you were trying to fix it. Oh, I think it is fixed.
Thanks, Gogo. So, so how do we know? Well, um, at the start of 2024, we engaged with, um, CELSSS, um, to undertake, uh, our, um, engage in the Bright Spots Programme. So this is, um, a means by which we engage directly with our kid-experienced children and young people. Um, and, and undertook, um, a, a survey with them. And, and they themselves were telling us some of the areas where they felt we were doing well. And, and also some areas where they felt that we could do better. We had an absolute fantastic response from our young people. We had, um, over seventy percent of them actually responded to the survey, um, in, in terms of looking at that. Um, and, and that was the highest in Scotland, um, around it. That was over four hundred individual responses. So a really in-depth and qualitative, um, response around it. They spoke positively, um, around the relationships with their social workers. They spoke positively about their happiness, um, and, and being, feeling, well, being listened to. All of that helps tell us that we are making positive strides to delivering the, the promise around it as well. But actually, there were also some areas where they felt we could do better. And, and those are the ones that we need to really listen, uh, most attentively to. Um, some of them is, is around the, the value of understanding why they were experienced, uh, why they were kid-experienced, I think, is, is a solitary lesson. That may seem a, a very simple one, but actually it's maybe something about just that journey that we need to keep revisiting with children, why they're in care and, and, and the circumstances which led them to being in care. Often that may have happened when they're very young, but actually as they're teenagers, just helping them to understand that. So th- these are some areas we, we would want to, to feel, um, uh, think more about. Some of them said they didn't always feel safe at home. But when you think about this, that's also about children who are living, looked after children, includes children who are looked after, living at home with their parents. And they wouldn't be looked after living in that context if there weren't risks and vulnerabilities. So some of that may well reflect some of those, those realities around it as well. So that, that was the sort of the view of our four, four to seventeen-year-olds on the whole, a very positive, um, story and narrative. But, but certainly areas we could do, do better. If you move on to the sort of the, your life beyond care, so this was the, the, the survey for ca- for care leavers. It, it's perhaps less positive. Um, and, and it reflects the fact that often the, the, the structural inequalities of, of our communities do impact upon our kid-experienced population acutely. And, and given what Eleanor's already said in terms of some of the, the outcomes that we're seeing in, in our Children's Services Plan Annual Report. It's not unsurprising that actually our kid experience spoke about that fear of bullying. Um, the, the one that jumped out for me, however, is, is that that sense that thirty-five percent of them, eh, felt they had, um, a, a physi- a, a mental health problem or a disability, that, that's quite a significant, uh, percentage. And, and, and some of that is subjective. That that's quite a significant percentage. And and some of that is subjective. We would acknowledge this was a subjective reflective survey around that as well. But but nonetheless, that that is highly significant and and something we do need to think further about, about how do we respond to that ongoing emotional vulnerability and and helping young people to to have that sense of recovery from from their early life experience, which which often impact upon this as well. Eleanor is right, the whole issue of housing again is is absolutely comes through on this, both feeling in terms of feeling safe and just feeling settled as well. So some of this is 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 really quite hard hitting, not always easy to read and 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 reflect upon. But nonetheless, I believe in important as well. Again, I'll pause before I come to one final slide.
Anybody wants to add anything into Graham's slice? You maybe want to touch a little bit about trauma. I do, I I didn't see anything. I can't see because it's very small writing. But, you know, we're talking about mental health, we're not talking about, you know, how how do we live with the traumatic event that happened to young people who are in care?
Absolutely. I mean, children generally come into our care because they have experienced early life trauma. That that is the primary reason why why that is the case. And and just that sense of self, that sense of of feeling connected. And I think the the reporting of feeling lonely, feeling isolated really comes out quite strongly. And and all of that is is bound to have that impact upon their sense of mental health and wellbeing, as you would expect. But it also then re-triggers that that sense of the trauma that they perhaps experienced at an earlier point in in their life around that as well. So it it's recognizing that for many of those young adults, they are carrying that trauma with them every single day. It makes it difficult for them to access services, have the confidence to feel that they can, you know, apply for jobs that may be beyond their reach. How do we absolutely really look at improving their positive destinations in in a way which is not just transient, but actually is sustained as well, which is is really something we would want to see as a focus going forward and as work we're taking forward with the Employability Team really much at this point in time.
Thank you, Graham. Absolutely. Like we said earlier, both people with disability who who don't want to tell the journey what's happening to them. And we will have the same problems in the care sector, carrying that trauma during so many years. You want to go to the next one unless somebody else wants to add anything?
My final side is actually a video. So we gave the 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 Bright Spots high level report to one of our young people who has a talent for making music. And within twenty four hours, he had produced the lyrics which are on the the screen there. You you won't be able to read them out from there. But he then made a video. And which he 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 signs that. So with your consent, I I would probably just ask for three minutes just for that video to be played. And this is the young person's interpretation of what the Bright Spots survey meant to him and and others within that care experience community.
Everybody's happy with that? Yes, if we can put it on, that'd be great. Not a chess player, pawn to king. The most important piece is a queen. We all know that. The king, in fact, is the most fragile piece, the chessboard. I hope you're going to be able for the people online to see it as well. If we can't, we can share it afterwards anywhere. But it'd be great if we could. Be patient is coming. The viewing will be soon. Technology is feeding us.
Yeah, I'm speaking up for the ones that the system forgot. Care experience, yeah, they're resilient, but they're living with a lot. Ninety two percent got someone holding them down. But one in five don't know their worker and that's a reason to frown. They say ninety six percent got a voice that they know will listen. But twenty two percent still feel that loneliness hit them. Half of them, no school, no work, no mission. Mental health on the rise. It's more than just intuition. Yeah, there's more than just intuition. Depression, anxiety, they're living with the weight. Half of those with conditions can relate to that state. Thirty five percent with long term scars inside, man, the pain runs deep, but they still fight with the pride. Yeah, they push through the dark and they rise through the storm. Even when they feel torn, they still try their best to stay warm. From that trust in a friend to that bond with a pet in a world that forgets they ain't lost hope yet. But we've got to listen close, can't just leave it unsaid. Half ain't feeling settled, they're still unsettled in their head. Man, eighty eight percent got someone praising their grind, but only twenty seven percent see a future that shines. Half don't feel safe where they're laying their heads. Thirty percent fearing their homes, that's a battle unsaid. In the hood, thirty six percent feel the danger is lurking at night. And how can you dream for tomorrow when today ain't right? Forty three percent got pets to soothe their soul, but half don't believe that they've found a safe role. Yeah, one in four don't feel that where they live is a fit. And forty one percent don't feel settled even a bit. Now, how are you supposed to thrive with that weight on your back when a place you call home feels like it's under attack? Yeah, some see light in these workers, some feel the trust, but one in three changed hands and that bond turns to dust. Thirty percent, they don't have a guide for the past year. That's a system that's broken. They need someone near them. And yeah, some still smile. Fifty four percent felt bright, but that doesn't change the struggle of their everyday fight. Twenty six percent out here struggling with the cash. Finance is low, like their hopes in the stash. Yeah, let's talk about the youth team, workers in the game. Sixty six percent showing love, respecting the name. But one in five don't know who's supposed to have their back and how you're supposed to grow with the support that you lack. And they try to manage the weight, but thirty one percent stressed, high anxiety scores, they ain't feeling their best. Appearance, self-worth, thirty one percent feeling low when you don't love yourself, where you're supposed to go. This ain't just stats, it's real life in the balance, real pain, real strength, still pushing through the challenge. Yeah, they dream of success, but it's hard to keep believing when only fourteen percent feel satisfied with their breathing. Yeah, so listen up close to the voice of the loss. The system ain't free, there's too high a cost. They rise like the sun through the pain and the strife, but it's time we step up and help brighten their life. I said it's time that we step up and help brighten the life.
Thank you very much for that, Graham. I thought that I made some comments at the start of the meeting. I should have not made them. I think it was a lot more eloquent than I was. Do you want to add anything to it?
So sadly, you know, I've I've worked for Aberdeen City Council for a long time and I've known Adam for an awful long time as well. And but he was very clear that he didn't want his face to be the the sort of image of the video he wanted his words to be to be to be the video, the 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 central point of that video. But thank you very much for letting me to show that.
Is it something we can share on social media? All right. So make sure we got the link through and some of the slides as well will will be great to 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 share this. Any final point from anyone? I know just bad sharing, part of four P M timing. Anybody wants to have a last word? No? Thanks very much, everybody, for your attendance. And thanks very much, Eleanor and Graham, Michelle and Chantilly. And I wish you a good rest of the day. Thank you very much. Bye.